...card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order for June 10th, 2019. Please join Councilmember Kano in the Pledge of Legions and the invocation.
(Pledge of Legions) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Father God, we thank you for the ability to gather as a governing council to conduct the business of the city in the public square. Thank you for the giftings and talents of each member, and despite any differences, that we always have the united heart and will to do the best for Goodyear. We invite you into these chambers and ask for your wisdom and revelation over each agenda item. We are blessed to honor the Goodyear's top teachers and two police officers tonight for their many noted accomplishments. We are so thankful for all of our sworn public safety members and the integrity, vision, and leadership of Chief Guyer and Chief Luizzi. The safety and protection of our police, fire, and military is our heartfelt and continuous prayer. Blessed the final adoption of the budget and the funds we have allocated to serve the needs of our community, may every dollar be stewarded well and accomplish the purpose for which it has been designated. Lord, every time we gather, we make our requests known to you. We thank you for answered and unanswered prayer. We acknowledge your grace and presence over our city. And finally, we thank you for all of our employees who work diligently to make council visions into realities, despite pressing timeframes and a multitude of complexities. We are truly blessed. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Kano, for that prayer. Greatly appreciated. All right, we have four communications items tonight, so let's get started. This is always an exciting time for us. So the first item is the recognition of Goodyear's top teachers. Will be Mr. Eric Wiederlicht. Oh, that's German, isn't it? Wiederlicht, if that's how you say that. I'm sorry. I can speak German, and you'd say Wiederlicht if you were in Germany, but we're not there, so... And also Ms. Carolyn Meeks, Communication Director. Tammy Voe will present. Tammy?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Member of the City Council. Tonight, we are very excited and proud to recognize two of Goodyear's top teachers. With the leadership of Mayor and Council, the city is always looking to find ways to recognize our top educators in our community. So during Teacher Appreciation Week, which was in May, the Communications Department took it to social media to launch a new campaign. And we asked students, we asked their parents, and we asked members of our community to tell us who is Goodyear's top teacher and why. And the responses were really overwhelming. We got hundreds of very passionate comments from people telling us who they thought deserved to be top teacher. While there are so many great teachers truly in our community, this was a good opportunity to recognize the top ones. And we have two teachers that got the majority of the votes during our campaign. And right now, I'd like to show you a video introducing you to both of them. Most of us remember that special teacher from our childhood, that teacher we'll never forget, the one who made us laugh, the one who held us when we cried, the one who pushed us when we felt like giving up. In Goodyear, those teachers are Eric Wiederlicht, kindergarten teacher at Basis, and Carolyn Meeks, second-grade teacher at Inkydo Schools. So in addition to tonight's recognition, if you drive down Interstate 10, you're going to see both of their pictures right along the freeway on three billboard sites at Bullard, Dyssart, and 99th Avenue. So that's about 200,000 people that'll be seeing this honor as they drive down the road. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Lord, who has the awards portion of tonight.
And we have the... Are they here? Where are the... Oh, you bring it up, okay. I have a couple stories for both of you, okay? So just so you know, Eric, your father-in-law, future father-in-law, called, okay? We are friends, and he sent me a text today. Is Morgan here?
Yes.
Okay, I promised a picture because he's out of town, and so he's missing this wonderful event, and he wanted me to tell you how proud he is of you and how lucky his daughter is. So afterwards, we'll be sure you come up, okay? And the thing that I liked about reading your resume, I love both of you, just both of you, outstanding, that you really care about their well-being, about their happiness. So you make learning a joy, and that's very, very special. And so you are awarded this... Look at this apple. It's not red, but it's breakable. We'll get Morgan up here in a minute and get a picture of her, okay? And Carol? We have something really in common. I had an incident going through school that changed how I felt, too. And I... It took me so long to overcome it. So let me tell you, I did not overcome it until I was in my 40s. So things that happen in school that are hurtful are... It's a memory that stays with you for a long time. No matter how much I prayed about it, no matter how much I... I couldn't get rid of it. So I know what you've been through, and but look what you've accomplished, and look how you're taking care of your student. You're making sure that not one of those students has that feeling in their classroom. For that, I thank you. And here's your apple, and let's take our picture. Now, before I call Council down, Morgan? I gotta send that off, okay? And my assistant, I guess... So she's gonna get that text off for me tonight, okay? All right. You wanna hold that up to show them?
One, two, three. Great. Thank you.
And so, Council, we want our pictures, so how do you want it? Tammy, over, out in front or over there? All right, the second item, I know you're all looking forward to. It's such a great accomplishment. Our Police Chief, Jerry Guy, will present the next three communication items. Recognition of an Officer of the Year, Naoh Yeh-Yao, by the Arizona Elk. Recognition of Officer of the Year, Jonathan Martinez. And recognition of retirement of our police K-9, Rudy. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize two employees and one four-legged employee on their accomplishments. First, I would ask Detective Noah Yoda, come on up. While he's coming up, Mayor, if it's okay, since we're doing three...
Yes.
I will have them stand by after they're recognized, and then at the end, we can do one picture, so Council only has to get up once.
Okay. So you want me down there, is what you said? No, I... Sorry. I forgot my directions. Shame on me.
We'll just get together for a picture afterwards.
Got it.
Detective Noah Yoo has been with the Goodyear Police Department since 2008 and has been a detective since 2014. Over the past two years, Detective Yoo has taken the lead role on over 62 death investigation cases, including some that generated international media attention. One such case involved a year-long homicide investigation, which ended in the arrest of several violent cartel members from Mexico. Due to his outstanding work on these demanding, high-profile cases, Detective Noah Yoo received the Goodyear Elks Lodge Officer of the Year Award last fall, and in May of this year, was honored again with the statewide Elks Club Officer of the Year Award, which encompasses over 50 Elks Lodges. In addition, he was honored by Arizona Family with their Honoring First Responders segment on Channel 3 and Channel 5 TV for outstanding police work. And if you missed that segment, I am hopefully going to show it to you now.
They're the unsung heroes of our communities. Accident Law Group proudly honors first responders.
I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a veteran. My family and faith are important to me, and I love being a detective.
Recognized for his diligence and commitment, Noah was promoted to detective in 2014 and has earned praise for his passion to solve complicated crimes.
The compassion that I feel towards the victims is a motivating factor that drives me.
Accident Law Group, proud to honor our first responders.
So that actually aired for three months on Channel 3 and 5. At this time, just like to honor Detective Noah Yoo, say thank you for all your dedication and support to the Goodyear Police Department. Next, I'd like to have Officer Jonathan Martinez come up. I know Jonathan's got his family. Do you want to come up?
Yeah.
So Officer Jonathan Martinez has been with the Goodyear... Has been a Goodyear police officer for two years. Due to his outstanding character, integrity, and respect for fellow officers in the community, he was assigned to the Goodyear Police Department Homeless Outreach Team in September 2018, which has provided to be very successful for both him and the department. Officer Martinez is making a difference for both citizens who have a permanent residence and those in the community who are currently homeless. On May 29th, Officer Martinez was honored at Grand Canyon University at their annual First Responders Prayer Breakfast. I know many of you were there, in front of over 700 attendees for his outstanding work on the Goodyear Homeless Outreach Team and for the positive impact he has made to the homeless population of Goodyear. Officer Martinez has received several awards and commendations for his homeless outreach efforts, and now we're starting to see requests come in from other organizations who want to come and ride along and view our success firsthand. Those other organizations include a police agency from Texas, who's gonna come all the way here to see how we deal with homeless outreach. Also, a Phoenix City Councilman who's coming out in two weeks to ride along with Officer Martinez on his shift. Officer Martinez has also been honored by Channel... By TV Channel 3 and Channel 5 in their Honoring First Responders segment, which I'm gonna show you, too. And it's pretty impressive because they've only done two segments of this program, and they only honor a couple officers, and so already Goodyear Police Department has had two officers being honored.
They're the unsung heroes of our communities. Accident Law Group proudly honors first responders.
I'm a father of two beautiful kids. I've been married for 13 years. I love frequenting the kids in our community and restoring and working on vehicles.
Assigned to the homeless outreach team, Jonathan is dedicated to promoting a safe community and providing help and resources to the homeless in Goodyear.
It's all about making connections, building trust, and serving all the individuals in our community.
Accident Law Group, proud to honor our first responders.
And the Goodyear Police Department is proud to have Officer Jonathan Martinez on our team, and we congratulate him. A job well done. And last, I would like to ask Officer Josh White and K-9 Rudy to come on up.
Where's Rudy?
I would shake your hand, but we had a bad experience last time, so... So Rudy became a Goodyear Police Department K-9 on April 12th, or April 20th, 2012. Originally from Holland, Rudy spent just a few days in California at our vendor before being hand-selected by Goodyear officers to join our team. Rudy was trained and certified in narcotics and patrol work. Throughout his seven years of service, he has apprehended over 100 criminals, sniffed out over 850 pounds of marijuana, and helped seize over $100,000 in currency. Rudy has proved himself time and time again. Without hesitation, he puts his life in harm's way to protect the officers and our citizens of Goodyear. Rudy has set the bar high for future police K-9s. And even though he'll be missed at the Goodyear Police Department, he'll be leaving... Living the best of retired life with Officer White and his family, enjoying Milk Bones and belly rubs. At this time, I have two things to present to Rudy. One is a bowl, a customized bowl. I'm not sure who ordered it, but I think they might think he needs to go on a diet because it's sort of small. And we are honoring Rudy with the Goodyear Police Department Medal of Merit for his heroism and all his dedication to the citizens of Goodyear. I think you better put it on.
I'll put it on.
So Josh, thank you. You and Rudy, thank you for all you've done, all your dedication to the Goodyear Police Department and the city of Goodyear.
Did you cut that dog ear, Bill?
Wow.
Let's look on those papers.
Wow.
Better than I pick them up while I have the chance. What a help. Oh, okay. There we go. All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Does anybody in the audience want to speak? In that case, now is the time to go to the consent agenda. So will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 5 through 12 by title only, please?
Five, approve the draft minutes from a regular meeting held on May 20th, 2019. Six, rescind the final plat approval for Pradera and approve a final plat for Phase 1 of Pradera. Seven, approve a final plat of Fulton Homes Straya Commons Phase 2. Eight, adopt Resolution Number 2019-1956 approving the modification of Assessment Number 14 within the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Nine, authorize expenditures in excess of $500,000 for fiscal year 2020. Ten, approval of budgeted fiscal year 20 fleet funds for the purchase and upfitting of public safety and other department work truck vehicles. Eleven, acceptance of water and sewer easements associated with the Grace &amp; Place Apartments. And twelve, adopt Resolution Number 2019-1961 approving and adopting the 2018 City of Goodyear Title VI Implementation Plan.
Thank you. Does anyone in the Council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Then can I have a motion a second to approve Items 5 through 12? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'm sorry. All right. Councilmember Hampton made the motion, and Vice Mayor Campbell second. So roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Now, let's go to the business. I'll remind Council to wait till motion is second and it's on before discussion. Go to 213. The first item is a public hearing for the FY 2020 Truth in Taxation and Final Budget Adoption and Truth in Taxation Increase. Public hearing is open. Lori Wiganroff, Finance Manager for the Budget and Research, will present. Lori?
Thank you. It's nice to be back. And on to the second step of the kind of formal process of adopting the budget. And just a reminder, this is the kind of the meeting where we have several steps to go through, so it's kind of outline what we're gonna do today. You've already called to order the public hearing. I will do a presentation on this item as well as the next item, which is the actual adoption of the budget. So one presentation, because the hearing is for both of those items. And then you'll take any public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Then you'll approve the Truth in Taxation Increase, which I'll outline a little bit further in the presentation. And then the state law requires that you then, when you adopt the budget, you'll hold a special meeting to do that. I will note that there is one additional item in this year's adoption of the budget, and that is a new state requirement that you designate the finance official who will be filing what's called the Annual Expenditure Limit Report. So that is included in the resolution, and that it will be assigning the Finance Director, Doug Sandstrom, to file that report. That's always been a requirement, but now they're requiring the Council to act to make that designation, so... And just kind of a highlight of where we've been to get to this process in terms of meeting with you and the public on the budget. We started back in October. Here, there's been hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time behind the scenes by all of the departments getting through these points in time. But essentially, we talked to you about where we were starting this process, which was the funds that were left over from the prior year, which become one-time monies for the FY 20. Went through some discussion of the financial policies and had you adopt those policies in advance of the manager making a recommendation. You reviewed the manager's recommended budget in mid-April. And then we held a public open house where the public had an opportunity to come see information on the city manager's recommended budget, as well as ask questions of staff from both the budget office as well as all departments who are represented at that meeting. You tentatively adopted the budget on May 20th. We've done several publications since then that are required by state law, and today we're here with you, holding the required public hearings and adopting the Truth in Taxation Increase as well as the actual final budget. I'll be back in two weeks for you to do the last step in the formal adoption process, which is making the property tax levies. So just a quick overview of the budget that you're adopting. Nothing has changed from the tentative budget that we presented and that you adopted on May 20th. So it's a $5114 million budget with, you know, major resources coming from sales tax and property tax revenues to support, and state shared revenues primarily supporting the general fund piece. And then the rest of the funding is either from the operating revenues of the water and wastewater and solid waste enterprise funds, fund balances primarily either taking care of carryovers from prior years, or cases in the enterprise funds where we've planned and built up some balances for capital projects. And then last year, just recently, we sold about $27 million in GO bonds that will be funding this... Some of the big projects in the coming year, and those resources are now sitting there in fund balance to be spent in FY 20. The budget essentially pays for day-to-day operations. In the FY 20 budget, it's a larger portion of the budget is going to CIP than is typical. The primary reason for that is where we've called out, you'll see 24% of next year's budget is going towards the surface water project. So it's an unusual, large, one-time project that's making things look a little different than a typical year. In terms of the operating budget, in addition to a lot of additions that are related to supporting growth in the community, the demands on the... supporting growth in the community, the demands on the development services areas, as well as supporting growth in the organization itself, some of the highlights are new or expanded programs that are being added, are the first of two years of funding to do census outreach, and then also a position and an assessment for the community, community outreach. There's a position for stormwater, that's a growing need of the city to address stormwater. There, we're planning on bringing in-house the inspection of sewer lines by buying a piece of equipment and bringing on staff, and we're eliminating, providing that through a contract. There's funding and positions to deal with technology security and an ongoing need of the organization and everybody. Some improvements or some one-time funding for GIS to kind of keep up with development. And there's a new system for rec, the recreation program registrations that will be available when the new recreation center opens. You've added a position for economic research, economic development research, a position to help implement the CIP in terms of inspecting those projects. Special events, you had one-time funding in the current year to add some new special events. That is being recommended or included as an ongoing expense moving forward. And also, there are some, looking at some ways to improve the frequency of watering and maintenance in parks, trimming trees, all those types of things are included in the budget. The budget does add 35.8 full-time positions. Six of those are sworn police in the neighborhood, homeless outreach and investigations areas. Ongoing, you know, additional support specifically for public safety, and as I mentioned earlier, for the, the entire organization, including development-related areas. Six of those positions just go to the day-to-day operations of the enterprise areas. So a number of positions being added to this, that brings the total position count to 67, 679.8, of which 639 of those are full-time positions. The capital budget is a very exciting budget this year. As I mentioned, the surface water plant is a very large project that's in there. But there are 130, about 130 projects in the five-year CIP. The first year or next year's budget includes about 80 of those. And of that 80, about 30 will be completed next year. As you know, we've brought forward not only a CIP that we feel we can deliver on budget, but also on time. So you have the information on those budgets and those timelines in, in the CIP. But some of the other big projects are the Civic Square Project that's getting underway to house a future city hall and a library, or a new city.
Got it? Okay.
Oh, there it goes. Well, it's going to come and go. All right. There will be, two fire stations will begin, will be completed for design and begin construction next year. Recreation Campus, the Recreation Center, the Aquatics Facility and the Park, another exciting project that is, is in design this year that will continue to move forward next year. And then in addition to the surface water plant in the water and wastewater areas, there's a couple of ongoing expansions of a water plant and a wastewater plant, so some, some big things there. So that's kind of a overview of the budget. And again, like I said, it's not changed from the tentative that you adopted on May 20th. In terms of truth and taxation, just an explanation of what that is. The state constitution allows or limits, depending on how you look at it, the growth in our primary property tax to be 2% over the prior year. In addition, it allows you to add the tax on any new properties, such as newly added homes or expanded businesses, new businesses, to that levy. The truth and taxation requirement is if you're going to levy anything more than this year's levy or the prior year's levy, you have to go through this process. So in other words, we go through this process in order to use that 2% growth in our primary property tax levy. And as a reminder, the primary property tax supports the ongoing general fund. So the amount of that 2% growth is $192,240. And that is also consistent with council financial policies that were adopted earlier this year and have been in place for many years to max, to levy the maximum allowable, allowable primary. So to show you where that, kind of walk you through the math of that, this year's levy is, of primary property taxes, just over $9 million. This then shows, breaking down what is happening with the prior levy. So truth and taxation says, will you go figure out what the rate would be to deliver the same amount of property tax? So that's how you get this dollar four rate. It's backing into what your rate would be if you didn't do the 2%. And then you'll see, we're actually levying what we estimate to be a dollar 619 to get the 97, 9.7 million dollar levy. So that 192, you see it's 2% of the levy, in terms of where it's coming from. The prior year properties bring in 87% of the levy. Appreciation on those existing properties brings in about 6%. And 5% has come from new construction in terms of the levy. To show you kind of what this means in home, in comparison to this year, the primary levy is what we're talking about with that truth and taxation. The secondary levy does not have any requirements like that. It is simply levied at what you're, what is required to pay your tax-supported debt service payments, and that's the limit on what you can do with that. But you'll see that we've got at the bottom of the screen that today, a home with $100,000 value, assessed valuation would pay $173.50 in Goodyear property taxes, City of Goodyear property taxes. Applying the maximum growth that's allowed under the statute of 5% to that home would mean that next year, that home would be paying 181.99, or basically just under an $8.50 increase in their property, in their Goodyear property tax. And that is entirely, almost entirely due to appreciation, as, because the tax rate is actually declining. So that kind of gives you a summary of both the budget and truth and taxation and why we're doing that. At this point, we'd be at the place where we'd take public comment. Again, the next steps would public comment, approve truth and taxation, and go through the special meeting to adopt that final budget.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the increase of 192,240 in the primary property tax levy for the fiscal year 2019-2020? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. I will now recess the regular meeting and open the special meeting pursuant to the ARS 42-17105. I now open a special meeting to determine and adopt the estimates of the proposed expenditures for the purpose stated in the published proposal. Everyone is present. So we will now consider the final adoption of the FY 2020 budget and the designation of the Chief Financial Officer for the Expenditure Limit Reporting. We receive the presentation during the regular meeting. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? I must say, the audience has gotten smaller. Yes. Okay. So that, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-1935 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1935 determining and adopting the final estimates of proposed expenditures by the City of Goodyear for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and designating the Chief Financial Officer for submitting the Expenditure Limitation Report for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020.
Thank you. May I have a motion a second to adopt Resolution 2019-1935? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Lord, Councilman Lortano. Did I get it or did I miss it? You're the second, you're the most. Keno, all right, thank you. It's very difficult to discern your voices in the center here with this echo, so everybody's going to have to help me on that. So the motion was by, I know you're all giggling, but someday you'll be in this spot and you'll feel it. So the motion was by Councilmember Keno, and the second was by Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion? Yes, Councilman Keno?
I just have a, hopefully a quick question. If there's a member of the public who's maybe late getting into this budget cycle and may have a question about the process, terminology, or even line items, is there someone that they can contact for additional information?
Yeah, they can contact the Finance Department.
Finance Department?
Ask to speak to me or, or Doug, or anybody in the team.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
I know I have said this before, but I just want to thank you, Lori, and all of your staff, and all of the department heads, and all of, everyone who had anything to do with putting together this budget. It was, it's a very thoughtful document, one that's very important, but for some reason, this year, it was enjoyable to go through all of the hearings we went through because of the way it was presented, and I just want to thank everyone for doing that for us.
I have to go along with Vice Mayor on that. I appreciate you expelling those compliments. It's, she's absolutely correct, and I think that we were, the council proved that to you by our, the questions we, the few questions we asked and the many questions we didn't ask because it was so well-presented. So, thank you. All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
There be no further business to consider, I will now adjourn the special meeting. I am now going to reconvene the regular meeting. Our next item on business is the FY 2020 Community Funding Recommendation. Christina Panaskew, Panaskew? Did I get any close to it?
You're close.
Yeah, close. Well, you know how that is. Anyway, we know her as the prior plant, so. Okay? All right. You've got, you've got the floor, Christina.
I still respond to CP.
You're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am here to advance the funding recommendations for Goodyear Community Funding Subcommittee. This competitive grant process supports nonprofit agencies delivering health or human services and quality of life programs to Goodyear residents. For this current fiscal year, $114,400 was awarded to 26 agencies, who in the first six months served more than 14,000 Goodyear residents. For example, 211 Arizona had already responded to more than 1,000 calls for information and referral, and the Goodyear Alliance Club did vision screenings for more than 35,000, 3,500 of our kids. Helping families in need provided benefit enrollment assistance for over 300 Goodyear residents. 98 victims of domestic violence found shelter through our partners. And Northwest Valley Connect linked 89 Goodyear residents with much-needed transportation assistance. Their full 12-month reports will be due July 15th, and I look forward to sharing that impact our investment has had on our Goodyear residents with you in a report summary at that time. For this budget that is just getting approved now, in FY 20, we have $130,000 available to award. The announcement of applications being available was posted on the Goodyear website homepage and emailed to subscribers of the Goodyear Community Funding Announcement Distribution List and members of the Faith and Community Roundtable, and a media release was sent to the West Valley View. We received 41 applications requesting over $300,000 in funding. Our subcommittee had a tough job, and I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Vice Mayor Wally Campbell, Councilmember Joe Pizzillo, and Councilmember Laura Keno. Thank you very much for your hard work and attention to this. They have prioritized the funding request and are recommending $130,000 in Goodyear community funding be dispersed to 23 agencies. The full detail can be found in the backup material provided to council. Here's a list that you might recognize. So with that, I look to you for approval of the recommended allocations, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Is there a motion, a second, to approve the recommended allocations for the FY 2018-20 Community Funding? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard, I heard a motion from Councilman Pizzillo. I heard that. And then I heard one on this side. So which one? And I heard a second from Vice Mayor. Open for council discussion? Councilman Pizzillo?
Yeah, it's always a tough decision. Limited funds and a lot of good causes out there. And I'm looking forward to, as we get into our retreat, when we start talking about on focus, maybe we can narrow that down, figuring out whether we need more, or where that focus should be, so we can do the greatest, greatest help to our community out there. And it was a tough decision, but I think we did a good job coming up with the recommendations.
Councilman Lortano?
I want to thank our committee members, because I know it is really tough when there's so much need and so many people are asking for assistance and everything, and I, I'm really glad the city was able to help out. And I agree with Councilmember Pizzillo that I think in the retreat, I think this is a great topic to have, how we can make sure it runs better, if we need more money, how we can do it to help more of our citizens.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I also think it's a great program. I think we do a lot of good with the money that we, we have and that we give the community. I had a quick question, though. You mentioned 211. Did we fund 211 this year?
No, I don't believe they applied this year.
Okay. I just didn't see him on there, and I didn't know if I missed him or if they're under a different name now, so. All right, thank you.
Councilman Keno?
I just want to take the time to acknowledge all of the nonprofits that serve our community. They really provide a wonderful social safety net and valuable service to people of all ages and families in various situations. And so even though there wasn't sufficient funds to meet the whole request, we're very grateful for the work that people provide.
Any other comments? All right, let's vote, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is to consider authorizing Amendment 7 to the IGA with Regional Public Transit Authority and a related budget transfer. Christina McMurty, Administrative Service Supervisor, presenting. Christina?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're ready to renew our transit services with Valley Metro this year. I showed this graph to you when you approved Sunday service back in March. We started the Zoom extension in October 2015, and that's why you'll notice the bars on this chart start with four during the month of October. I realized after I looked at it that I probably should explain that. It's four years starting in October 2015. Service is really going great. It's, it's, it's a little misleading because the bars are all over the place, but for such a short stretch for a circulator, this is Goodyear Boardings. So that's, if a passenger gets on in Goodyear, any, any point along the route in Goodyear, that counts as one trip. If they get back on the Zoom in Tolleson, that counts as one trip for Tolleson. So this is total number of passengers that get on the Zoom extension in Goodyear. That's what those numbers represent, and, and it's really going great. I received the April data after I submitted this presentation to the clerk's office, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. April's total was 1,161 passengers, and May was 937. So it's still going really strong. I have some really good news about this, too. In October, due to a lot of demand to the City of Avondale, they want to change the Zoom so that it is one route instead of two. It is currently, there's a Zoom North and a Zoom South. They want to combine those, and by combining them, they are going to add Indian School Road. So the Zoom will now stop at Indian School Road in Litchfield. I'm going to give you a specific map when I come back with the intergovernmental agreement for that, probably in August or September. But the demand to the City of Avondale, and actually, we've had a few comments about it, too, is because people want to get to the Walmart and to the Safeway and a few other areas there. That was their number-one request. So just to bring you back to 2015, we didn't start this until Avondale asked us about it because they had so many citizens that wanted to go to our target on Litchfield and McDowell. So here we go again. So I'll be bringing that back to you in August, but so far, so good. It's going really well. So I'll be bringing that back to you in August, but so far, so good, it's going really well. Oops, sorry. So hopefully, Ron Brooks' presentation last week about Dial-A-Ride helped a little bit. It's still, there's a lot to, to take in on Dial-A-Ride service, but we've got a lot of good things coming. The fact that the service provider is changing in July from City of Phoenix to Valley Metro is actually a really good thing. It is causing a cost increase for us, but that's because City of Phoenix wasn't actually charging us the full cost for service, and Valley Metro is going to have to do that. So we're seeing an increase in Dial-A-Ride service of about $60,000. We have these funds, they're available to us. I just want to point out, on that fiscal year 19 regional trip breakout, what you're seeing there is only the trips that Valley Metro has been providing service for. They provide the regional trips, that, these are the trips that start in Goodyear, but then go out of our service area, go to Chandler, go to Gilbert, go to Tempe. Anything that leaves the southwest region is currently served by Valley Metro. In July, Valley Metro will have all of it, the local service, which will be like Goodyear to Avondale, Goodyear to Litchfield Park, and then they will also have the regional trips as well. It'll be more efficient. So that's just a little bit of a sliver of what the service is like, and there's additional information we're going to be providing to you this week on Friday in the City Manager's report that you asked for last week. City of Phoenix is trying to pull that data together, and I'm sorry, I don't have it for you tonight. And then this chart is just a reminder of where our revenue sources are. The total fiscal year 2020 cost of the city's share for transit services this year, the total is 266,497. That's Zoom and Dial-A-Ride. The city's share of the cost of the Zoom extension is 191,378, and that's the total after our 50% federal funding for operating. So that's minus, it would be a total of 388,000 if we did not have that federal assistance. And our share for Dial-A-Ride services is 75,119, and that's after a deduction of 14,400 from Prop 400 or our half-cent sales tax. That comes off before we have to pay, and the fares are also taken out of that total. So, and then in addition to the taking action on the IGA this, this evening, I'm asking you to approve a budget transfer of $21,000. This is because when we submitted our budget proposal for this year, it was before Valley Metro had to make a change to their estimate that they provided to us. When City of Phoenix decided to back out of providing our Dial-A-Ride services and Valley Metro had to take that on, we had already gone through the budget process, so we're going to take an additional $21,000 out of our Arizona Lottery funds to cover the difference. So that's my presentation for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions and request your approval on the IGA.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, is there a motion, a second, to authorize the city manager to approve the Amendment 7 to the Transit Services Agreement with the Regional Public Transit Authority? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Stip. And do I hear a second? From Councilwoman Hampton. I just split you up. Open for council discussion? No discussion, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. The second vote? I need a motion, a second, to approve the budget transfer in the amount of $21,000 from the Arizona Lottery Funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Pizzillo, and a second from Councilwoman Laura Tonno. Open for council discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go on to 17. Next item in business to adopt the Resolution Number 2019-1965, approving the Uniform Video Services License Agreement Application Affidavit. Linda Beals, Real Estate Coordinator, to present it. Linda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As noted, tonight I'm here to present the, the recommendation we have with regard to the resolution for the approval of the Uniform Video Service License Agreement, along with the application and affidavit form. As many of you may be aware, especially since we brought back CenturyLink's extension a couple of months ago, and at that time made mention that we'd be coming back with this licensing, this new licensing information required by law, which was reproved under Senate Bill 1140 back on May 16th of 2018. The intent of this legislation is to streamline the process throughout the municipalities in Arizona with regard to video communications licensing throughout the different municipalities. So what they're required of us essentially was to come up with a set of, a licensing agreement, an application form, and an affidavit that we could use that met the terms of that, of the new Senate bill that was passed. We worked with a huge number of other municipalities. We do, as part of the City of Goodyear, attend on a bi-monthly to quarterly basis, a group that includes most of the larger and even a ton of the smaller municipalities in Arizona to discuss telecom, various changes in telecom laws, as well as how other communities are handling these types of documents. One of the things that we, they do help us with is providing us with samples of what their attorneys and their groups have come up with, so we aren't reinventing the wheel, which is wonderful for us. So what we were able to do, and what we were required under the new law, to have these new documents available by July 1st of this year. We also have to be available to implement these new forms by January 1st of 2020. So that's why it's so critical that we get to you now and get these approved, because we have to make them available. Now, what you might be asking is, who are these video providers? Those video providers right now out there are Cox Communications and CenturyLink. Those are the two we have. We don't have any more on the back burner that we're aware that are looking to come in, but one thing they will be able to do at the beginning of the year is to opt out of their existing agreements and enter into the new agreement. And we are anticipating that both entities will do so. CenturyLink extended theirs entirely with the intention of entering into the new document. Cox, my understanding, was very strongly supportive of the new legislation. So again, we anticipate they're going to be coming back in to opt out of their existing license, and the law requires us to allow them to opt out and opt in to the new one. Another, there were lists of items that were changed in the legislation, but the legislation really narrows down what we can ask for from these entities. It limits our ability to collect revenues to 5% of their gross revenues, and that will include the taxes, other items such as in-kind collections from them. It also does some things, like it limits our ability to require how many households that they serve. It limits how much, it, it limits how much we can require from them as far as in-kind services. It's very specific in those areas. And so in other words, we can try and negotiate and say, hey, we want these types of services brought to our community, we want you to bring these things to us, but if they say no, if it's not required by the law, then they won't have to do it. So, and in each case, if they do bring it, then, and there's a value associated with it, they'll have to be offset. So these are things that were just, they are required by law, so... Essentially, I think that gives most of the overview of it. One thing I guess I did miss was that there is a 10-year limit on the initial, on the initial lease, so that's what we'll start with, and then we'll work from there. We're not anticipating a huge difference in the revenues, like I mentioned. We are, we do collect 5% now. There might be a small adjustment because of the taxes that we collect on top of it, but otherwise, that's kind of the new bill in a nutshell. Our recommendation is that we move forward with the resolution as drafted, approving the uniform standard forms and the affidavit, including the license agreement, the application and affidavit, and provide authority for the city manager and/or their designee to negotiate these agreements as they come up for negotiations. With that, I open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Linda. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? The city clerk, please read Resolution Number 2019-1965 by title only, please.
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1965, approving uniform standard forms for video service licensing application affidavit and license agreement, and authorizing the city manager or designee to negotiate and execute license agreements in accordance with applicable laws.
Thank you. May I have a motion, and a second, to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1965? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Caneau, a second by Councilwoman Pizzillo. Open for discussion? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
How does it impact our hands when it comes to them doing work in the right-of-way and repairing it, or putting the roadwork back?
That's a great question.
That was in the original condition before they started digging it up?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Pizzillo. We will still be able to manage the rights-of-way and permit them the way we had prior, so they will still be required to go through our permitting process, they will still be required to repair those roadways, and to do those type of things as in the prior condition.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice, Vice Mayor?
Am I understanding correctly that the new, that this bill that just passed will limit us to 5%, and that includes sales tax, or whatever it is?
It includes the transaction privilege tax, it does include our fees, everything, just, it pretty much limits us to collecting 5% of their overall gross revenues.
All right, and they, so that there's no fee that they pay to come into the city?
We're allowed to collect, do you think? There's no additional fee.
But there is, there is a fee now that will stay there.
There was a fee, there may have been fees in the past, depending on what, which contract we're talking about, but there won't be any additional fees. We will be under a completely brand-new contract as they opt out of their old ones and opt into the new ones.
All right, do we have any recourse at all with either CenturyLink or Cox for their lack of service?
That is an interesting part of the law. The recourse is that they can, they can file a complaint with the city, but we don't, under the new law, have any authority to actually take any action. Any action will have to be taken by the federal government under the FCC. So although we could, in theory, assist, and we can collect complaints, what we don't have is any bite, we don't have any authority to take action.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's go vote on this roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Caneau?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno? Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, let's go to Item 18, last on the business, to consider authorizing the city manager to execute the two Lower Basin Drought Contingency Implementation Plan Agreements. Presenting is Gretchen Irwin, the Water and Resources Sustainability Manager. Gretchen?
Good evening, Mayor Lord and Council. I'm here this evening to advance the two agreements which would allow the City of Goodyear to take part in the implementation of the Lower Basin Drought Contingency Plan. In 2018 and early 2019, ADWR and CAP jointly led a 41-member steering committee through months of public and small group meetings with the purpose of developing the framework of the Arizona Drought Contingency Plan. The City of Goodyear was one of the three Maricopa cities that served on that, that steering committee. During this process, new arrangements, which form a package called the Arizona DCP Implementation Plan, were negotiated. The package of agreement shares the burden of the impacts from the Colorado River reduction, and it shares the benefits of increased reliability for Arizona water users. As a part of the DCP Implementation Plan, nine entities, which includes Goodyear, are agreeing to send a specified volume of currently unused CAP supplies to the Penal Active Management Area to partially offset the reductions to agriculture as identified in the DCP. This mitigation from the city only occurs when lake mead levels are below an elevation of 1075, which is a Tier 1 shortage, or below 1050, which is a Tier 2A shortage, and only until 2022. So in return, the Arizona Water Banking Authority agrees to compensate the entities with long-term storage credits. So storing water for long-term storage credits is exactly in line with our current strategy of ordering our CAP allocation and storing it for credits. The city's water portfolio, portfolio is not impacted by participating in the DCP solution. Fortunately, precipitation and snowpack have been well above average this year, and the Bureau of Reclamation has already determined there will not be a shortage in 2020. The two agreements that are required to accomplish our participation in the DCP are the one which will allow us to send water to Penal Irrigation, or Penal Agriculture. This is the IGA for water storage with the City of Goodyear and Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation Drainage District, and the second agreement is the one that allows the Arizona Water Banking Authority to provide the long-term credits for us sending our water to Penal. That's the Agreement to Exchange Long-Term Storage Credits with Arizona Water Banking Authority and City of Goodyear. So even though the DCP will not prevent a future Colorado River shortage, projections by the Euro, US Bureau of Reclamation show that DCP would reduce the risk of lake mead falling below critical elevations. So DCP provides Arizona with greater certainty for reliable and secure water supplies now and in the future. Staff recommends that council authorize the city manager to execute the two Lower Basin Drought Contingency Implementation Plan Agreements substantially in the forms attached hereto, and authorizing the city attorney or his or her designee to make non-substantive changes to the agreements before execution.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And I need a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute the Lower Basin Drought Contingency Implementation Plan and Agreements. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Laura Tonno, and a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Open for discussion? Councilwoman Laura Tonno?
I just started sitting on AMW, and I want to thank you and Javier for all your hard work, and I mean, they were really meeting and helping to get this through, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's vote for it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're down to the information items. Does council have any comments, updates, requests for information? None, all right, turning over to the city manager. None, all right, that's great. Let's go tell you what the next meetings are. Next meeting will be a city council induction on June 17, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. In addition to the, to the meetings on June 24th, we also have a special joint meeting and with the Planning and the Zoning Commission on June 26th to discuss Civic Square. June 24th, we have a special meeting, June 24th, we have a regular meeting, 26th, a special meeting, July 1, a regular meeting, July 8, a regular meeting. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.